Hey Liz. Hey Liz. I would call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on October 4th, 2024 through the posting and notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.84. How about a motion to approve the...
We need to do the pledge first.
Okay, let's do the pledge first. I messed that up last time, did I? Right?
You're still perfect in our eyes.
Yeah.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Ashley Wright, the Principal of Wilson Elementary. Ashley has been in education for 12 years. Mrs. Wright earned her Master's Degree in Counselor Education from the Pennsylvania State University, a Master's Degree in Educational Administration from Cardinal Stretts University, and a Bachelor's Degree from Lock Haven of Pennsylvania University. Principal Wright, who do you have with you this evening?
I have Levani and Selahvi Kong, and they were selected this evening because they show all of our Wilson expectations and have been recommended numerous times for several awards at Wilson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to lead public where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, let's move on. 1.3, consider a motion to adopt October 8th, 2024 Board of Education Agenda. I need a motion?
Subвод.
Motion in a second? Commissioner Myers. And we're going to try to vote electronically. On board? Yeah? That passes you now, so 7-0. Commissioner Herta and Commissioner Audrey are absent. Okay, so Commissioner Paul is going to do the safety message for us.
Thankfully, I had a safety message prepared for last night's PPC meeting, so I offered to Commissioner Murray that I would be able to help out with this absence. So if you attended or watched last night's PPC meeting, I'm sorry to disappoint you. There will not be a new safety message. However, these are important safety tips for us all, whether you are a child or adult who will be participating with dressing up for Halloween. And these tips come to us from the American Academy of Pediatrics. When shopping for costume, wigs, and accessories, look for and purchase those with a label clearly indicating that they are flame resistant. If a sword, cane, or stick is part of your child's costume, make sure it is not sharp or too long. A child may be easily hurt by these accessories if he stumbles, he or she stumbles, or trips. Do not use decorative contact lenses. I pointed out, this was a new one for me to read about, so pay attention, because this might be new information for you as well. Do not use decorative contact lenses without an eye examination and a prescription from an eye care professional. While the packaging on decorative lenses will often make claims such as "one size fits all" or "no need to see an eye specialist," obtaining decorative contact lenses without a prescription is both dangerous and illegal. This can cause pain, inflammation, and serious eye disorders and infections, which may lead to permanent vision loss. That sounds scary. Small children should never carve pumpkins. Children can carve a face with markers, then the adult can finish the job. If the children do the cutting, be sure to use a child-safe tool and under supervision. Also, consider using a flashlight or glow stick instead of a candle to light your pumpkin if you do use a candle. Votive candle is the safest. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Just wanted to add, it's Fire Prevention Week. Chris, did you change your smoke detector battery like you said?
I know, because I was months late last time, so I'll be months late this time, and I'll be on track.
But you missed the best part. I screwed up on the pledge allegiance again, did I?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed it. I looked out, and I was like, what is happening?
Okay. All right. Change the batteries in your smoke detectors. It's going to save your life. All right. Student Pres... No, we got Craig and Parker High School AP Global Scholar Recognition.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're really excited to present to you two groups of people that have done phenomenal work for us at Parker and Craig. The first group we're each going to present is our students who are our AP Scholars, and then our AP Teachers that exceeded the global average. Since the pandemic, we've seen a sharp increase in our students that are taking AP courses and the number of tests that they're taking. I think that's a huge achievement for our kids and a huge feather in the cap for our students, because as you know, students that are successful in AP courses have the opportunity to go to college and potentially get credit for that. So that's a huge win for kids when they leave our high schools.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Lau said. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to celebrate some really distinguished students and teachers this evening. So what I wanted to talk about a little bit is this honor that the students have earned. So they're called AP Scholars, and they're recognized at sort of three tiers of accomplishment. So when Mr. Lau and I speak later about being an AP Scholar, that means that the student has earned a three or higher, and these tests are scored 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, right? So they've earned a three or higher on three or more exams. The AP Scholars who are here this evening that are called Scholars with Honor have earned a 3.25 average on all the exams they've taken, and a three or higher on four or more exams. And we also have here tonight some AP Scholars with Distinction, which means that they've earned an average score of 3.5 on all the exams that they've ever taken, and a three or higher as sort of a bar on five or more exams. So they've taken a significant number. And again, I want to mention what Mr. Lau said there about the teachers here this evening. So their students' average score exceeds the average score of students not only in the state of Wisconsin, but also the global average. So our students are outperforming their peers all over the world. And so we want, we would definitely want to applaud the teachers for their work in preparing our students for that accomplishment. So, without further ado... All right, from Craig High School, first our AP Scholars with Distinction. Carla Bueno, Tristan Chan, Nathan De Cook, Camila Granja, Riley Jansen, Presley Morgan, and Kate Wixom. All of those students are Craig High School's AP Scholars. Let's give them a round of applause. There are three other AP Scholars who weren't able to be here this evening. Of course, these students, you know, work, and they're involved in sports and clubs and activities, and I want to at least mention their names. They are Faith Kettle, Theodore Richards, and Nolan Shuf, also AP Scholars at Craig High School. Nicole de Lamora is our AP Scholar with Honor, and she's in that category by herself, so let's give Nicole a big round of applause. And now our AP Scholars with Distinction. Here with us tonight, Gabriel Barajas, Brayden Chubak, James Ganson, and Noah Sukraj. Congratulations to all of you. And they have a classmate also unable to be here tonight who is an AP Scholar with Distinction, and her name's Macy Huber. So those are Craig High School's AP Scholars. Are we going to do your students now? My teachers? All right, fantastic. Here's my next distinguished bunch. I have, and again, just a reminder, so the teachers whose names I'm about to mention, their students' average score exceeded the state and global averages. Here tonight are Maria Kane, who's our teacher of AP Drawing, Heidi Hemming Venden, teacher of AP Government and Politics, and Blake Budrow, teacher of AP Calculus B. So let's give them a big round of applause. They also have a number of colleagues who are not able to be here tonight who've also earned this distinction. Mr. Adam Bunderson, AP Statistics, Amanda Dopkins, AP Human Geography, Jeff Leider, AP Physics II, Crystal Lippincott, AP Chemistry, Sarah Shea, AP French, and Dan Shalagowski, AP Computer Science Principles. All of those teachers have accomplished the same thing that the teachers here this evening. So thank you again for letting us be here tonight.
All right, I'm happy to be back and talk about our kids for a few minutes. We have... Oh, you can stop right there. That's perfect. Yep. We have 15 students that we're recognizing this evening. We've got a few that aren't with us. The first to recognize is AP Scholar Cooper Buell. The next is Nika Cantwell, who's an AP Scholar with Distinction. And then Chris Cozy, who's an AP Scholar. Julia Emin, who's an AP Scholar. Hannah Gander, AP Scholar. Ryan Han, AP Scholar with Distinction. James Hodge, AP Scholar with Distinction. Olivia Larson, AP Scholar. Cameron Mauser, AP Scholar. Violet McHugh, AP Scholar. Rose Montani, AP Scholar. Sorch Morris, AP Scholar with Distinction. Lucy Natali, AP Scholar with Distinction. Jacob Schmeling, AP Scholar. And Diana Vargas, AP Scholar. So congratulations to our Parker kids. Fun bit of trivia. Our students took 237 AP exams last year. I'm also exceptionally proud of the fact that every kid that says they want to take an exam regardless of socioeconomics, we find a way to make it happen. So, you know, we have the ability to do waivers for kids. We also have funds that we set aside for kids that aren't on free and reduced lunch, but also have economic issues, so that's never a barrier for anybody. Now we're going to have our teachers come in. All right, we've got five of our teachers here with us this evening. We have Matt Flynn, who teaches AP European History and also teaches AP US History. Brian Devine, who teaches AP Psychology. Crystal Callison, who teaches AP Lit and Composition. Gabrielle Hankins, who teaches AP... Oh my gosh. AP... Language, there we go. And Bob Getka, who teaches AP Computer Science. Additionally, we have some other teachers that are not with us this evening but also exceeded the global average. Rebecca Diener in 2D Art. Amanda Olson in AP Biology. Amy Lawrence in AP Drawing. Matt Knutson in AP Music Theory. Angela Zarnowski and Nicole Zilman in AP Pre-Calc. So we've got quite a list of people that are doing good things for our kids. Thank you.
We want to make sure that the parents are thanked as well. Parents, grandparents, it takes a family. It all starts at home, so thank you, parents. Thank you very much. Next, student presenters from Parker High School, Cam Raisin. Yes?
Is this on? Okay, cool. Okay, so I'm Cameron Raisin. I'm the Parker representative this month. My friend Kira, who was with me last month, is not able to join me, so we decided we're going to do every other month. We're going to switch on and off. Okay, so this week, we wanted to first start off by saying that we celebrate the School Board Appreciation Week. This is a perfect time to express our gratitude, our gratitude to our School Board Commissioners for their dedication and service to our district. Your commitment, your commitment to fostering a supportive educational environment ensures our students can thrive and reach their full potential. Thank you so much for your hard work, visions, and leadership in shaping the future of our community. All right, the fun stuff. Okay, so Parker High School received 12 Argentine students from Mosario, Argentina yesterday. These students are here as part of the Interamigos Exchange that was established more than 25 years ago. Our Argentine guests will be living with host families during their two-week stay, and will be shadowing their Parker hosts while they're at school to learn what it's like to be like a Parker Viking. This is a great opportunity for our students at Parker to get an authentic cultural immersion experience and is something our Parker students look forward to every year. So from my personal experience, our Spanish class teacher, Ms. Smalley, Angela Smalley, we always look forward to meeting our Argentine exchange students with her. So every year, I can remember ever since I had her freshman year, she lets us know their interests and like what they're involved in through like a slideshow presentation. And so like we always get to like say hi and like meet all these people through the slideshow, and we're like, ooh, I like them, they look cool, like we want to be paired up with them. So it's a fun learning, learning experience, and we can all relate to them in some aspect, and it's a fun experience where they join our everyday lives for the next few weeks. Next, Parker will also receive one exchange student from Cali, Colombia, from our sister school, Colle Hio Berkman's. Superintendent Holtzman visited our partners in Cali, Colombia over the summer. Four students and one teacher arrived in Janesville on October 6th, and the students will stay through November 2nd, attending classes at Parker and Craig High School. The Parker PTSA hosted a campus and neighborhood cleanup last week. Thirteen Parker students showed up on their day off of school to help clean up trash in the parking lots and grounds at Parker and some of the surrounding neighborhoods. This is crucial to many clubs like SLC, Student Leadership Council, Link Crew, and Spanish National Honor Society, who offer this event to us for service hours, and it helps us create an in-community service opportunity with our peers. It ensures, it ensures the cleanliness of Parker High School environment, which we, which we greatly appreciate. On October 2nd, the AP Gov class sponsored the League of Women Voters, which came to help 18-year-olds register to vote. Fifty-five members of Parker DECA attended the kickoff meeting, which focused on all of the activities planned for this school year. We are excited about all of the community service and competition events scheduled. I was honored to be a part of this great meeting. I was a planner and director of this meeting as the Vice President of the DECA program. We met many times this summer, and at the beginning of the school year, we planned for this first annual meeting. We were able to present what our DECA chapter has in store for the school year and some of our favorite community service, service events, for example, being Trick or Can, which is our version of collecting canned goods for ECHO, where we go around the community and certain neighborhood spots that we have picked out, and we gather these into a paper bag, and then we take it to ECHO. And last year, I believe, we raised around 1,000 pounds of canned goods. Another great service event that we do is the fruit basket making with rotary, which is my personal favorite. Next, English 12 students at Parker High School spent last week engaging in a short unit on censorship that corresponded with banned books week, which was September 21st through the 28th. During this unit, students practiced various wicker strategies, stations, scavenger hunts, and amazing race-like tasks to engage with critical thinking issues surrounding challenges and bans to literature. They enjoyed collaborating on different tasks, including conducting inquiries into the First Amendment and various books that have been challenged or banned recently. Next, the Parker Arts Academy is thrilled to be one of the first high schools in the nation to present the new musical, Hades Town Teen Edition, at Parker High School, November 8th through the 10th and November 15th through the 17th. To build off of this, the Parker Arts Academy also with the choir concert. It'll be on Tuesday, October 15th, and it will feature all of the curricular choirs. And congratulations to these eight Parker High School choir students, Sophie Anderson, Ella Hale, Alexa Jensen, Alexandra Jonas, Lucy Natali, Jacob Schmeling, Greta Schuler, and Gary Sellers for being selected for the WSMA All-State Honors Project Choir. They perform at the Overture Center in Madison on Thursday, October 24th. So best of luck to them. Parker's Adventure Fayed classes took a fishing trip this past Friday and Monday. I went on this trip, and it was so much fun. Between the two days, 72 seniors attended this trip, and after eight days of lead-up instruction by Mr. Miller, classes spent a day practicing casting and release at Lake Laota in Evansville. Volunteers from the Milton Gathering Places Fishing Club assisted Mr. Miller and us students to experience a variety of fishing styles throughout the day. Twelve students caught their first fish of their life on this trip, which is a great accomplishment, and 50 students caught at least one fish. I caught six. Anyways, so the Parker Athletics have been busy for the first month of school, and it's hard to believe that we have already entered our last month of the fall season. Here are a few highlights. So Parker cheerleading led a Childhood Cancer Awareness Month initiative throughout the month of September, where they raised money to be donated to the Isaac Strong Foundation and the Emmy's Wish Foundation. Parker Football hosted our yearly Salute to Service Night, where we honored and thanked our leaders of the Janesville Police Department, Rock County Sheriff's Department, Janesville Fire Department, and all of our nurses, doctors, medical staff, and active and retired military personnel. In addition, we recognized Dr. Rutherford for his 25 years of service and dedication to the school district of Janesville. We want to thank our community for a great turnout, and in addition, we want to thank the Parker Band, Richard Ellis Post 205 of the American Legion, and the Marine Corps for participating actively in our Salute to the Service Night. The WIAA has identified 27 student athletes across the state to serve on the inaugural Student Athlete Leadership Team for this school year. We want to recognize Parker Senior and Three-Sport Athlete Mia Riley, my friend, who earned the opportunity to serve and represent Parker on the state leadership team. It's a major accomplishment, and us peers are so very proud of her. The Parker Girls Golf Team brought home a regional championship and later placed third overall at sectionals. Congratulations to McKennel Hanell, Olivia Larson, Grace Nylons, Paige Smith, and Skylar Beerman. In addition, we want to congratulate and wish the best of luck to Grace Nylons, who qualified for the WIAA Individual State Golf Meet, and we're looking forward to the upcoming WIAA Tournament Series throughout October. Lastly, we are looking forward to our Homecoming festivities that take place next week. We have a very busy schedule that includes our dress-up days, athletes visiting our elementary schools, the girls' flag football activities sponsored by the Women's Empowerment Club, our annual homecoming parade, the homecoming football game on Friday, and followed by our homecoming dance on Saturday, October 19th at 8:00 PM, and our theme is Tangled, like the movie. Anyways, we appreciate, I, we and the Parker students appreciate your time, and we'll see you next month.
And next, from Craig High School, Presley Morgan.
Okay. Hi, my name is Presley Morgan. I am the student representative for Craig High School. So to kickoff, sports are coming to an end. On September 28th, Janesville Cross Country hosted the largest meet in the Midwest at the Blackhawk Golf Course, and it had over 3,000 runners compete. There were over 50 boy high school teams and just under 50 teams for girls, and hundreds of middle school runners. There was beautiful weather, and the event was once again a tremendous success. Many of the Craig Cross Country kids said that they all PR'd, and it was a wonderful experience for them all. They're moving on to conference soon, and they're predicted pretty high, so we'll see where that goes. Along with going into state, our Craig Girls Golf Team advanced and placed second in their sectionals yesterday. They'll play, stay at the University Ridge in Madison on Monday and Tuesday next week. Girls tennis has one athlete, Raya Ariazola, competing tomorrow with a chance to advance to state tournament. She's planning sectionals to go to the fourth straight time in a row for her high school career. The Craig Girls Volleyball Team has senior night tonight. It's against La Follette, and this will be their last home match. Football has two games remaining, including a home game this Thursday against Madison West at Monterey. The volleyball team needs one more win this season to qualify for playoffs, so that's really exciting for us. The Craig versus Parker game went really well for Craig. They brought home the win, and then we had our homecoming game. Should not go as well, but it was still a wonderful experience in the morning. Along with our homecoming game, we had court walked down, and that was exciting, too. Boys soccer plays their final home game against Milton on Friday, when they, too, will celebrate senior night. Including a couple of our foreign exchange students, we had two foreign exchange students play in our tennis this year, and we're trying to recruit a lot more for our winter sports. Most of them don't know the fall sports since they're just coming into the school, but we usually have a great turnout for winter. And then for Homecoming Week, we had our homecoming this Saturday. With court, we had many different things to honor our participants. We had pins, lanterns that we brought down as we walked through the school, signs on lockers, and confetti to reveal the king and queen, who were Grace Mannion and Paul Platts. Our homecoming turnout was over 800, and our theme this year was Enchanted Garden. During our pep rally, it was really smooth, lots of fun. We shipped up some of the games that we don't usually have. We had this mattress race and an inflatable costume race that was very interesting to watch. We had act stat activities after, and a powder puff game with three teams. And this was huge, because we've never had three teams before. And this is all of the female athletes who are on varsity, and they get to play a fun football game. Student Council cleaned up this week after all of that, and along with student council, we have the blood drive next Wednesday, the 16th. That'll be the first one of this year. Our parade for our homecoming week, we had court on two trucks with beautiful weather, and all the schools nearby had the kids, and they all had a great time. We had over 30... 36 clubs, sports activities, and the Future Cougar Parade honoring all of the children from the public elementary schools here. Along with that, our National Honor Society officers have been meeting to discuss what they want their big volunteer opportunity to be selected on, and we were talking and discussing, and we think that we're going to work with the Boys and Girls Club this year. So all of our volunteer opportunities we send out to people in NHS will be related to helping the youth in our community. And I think that's all going on in Craig right now. Thank you.[1298.01][1298.01][applause]
There's a motion in a second, and we'll vote electronically.
Sorry.
Thank you. That vote passes unanimously, seven to zero. Item number five, update on long-range facilities plan.
Thank you. Just wanted to add a little bit about AP Scholars. You know, they're standing up here getting their name recognized. If I was an AP Scholar, I'd be like slapping high fives and jumping up. Yeah, but anytime we can recognize our students and staff for their academic excellence, I think it's awesome. So, first chance to kind of see what that looked like, and we'll want to continue to provide. We're going to have some students come back who are our AP, yeah, ACT test kids who scored 30 and higher. So again, it's always good to, I feel like if I rub shoulders with really smart people, maybe it'll...[1410.75][1410.75][laughter] 5.1, update on long-range facilities plan. I just wanted to give, again, you an update a little bit on some things that we're doing. We have a postcard mailer that should hit at the end, should go to print in the next week or so, and then, again, wait seven days or so before it gets to the mailers, but that's coming up. We have a video storyboard that we are almost finished with, and so that'll continue to, when we get that, then we'll push that out. And again, that's just kind of a video piece that looks at some of our needs in the district, and I mean, we're working on that. We continue to have great partnerships with other local agencies. We've been working hard with the Forward Janesville Government Relations Committee, and they've been supporting us in our conversations about the referendum, and they've been communicating that at many area groups. So we're not the only ones out there passing that message, and so that's much appreciated, where they're going to Rotary and they're going to Lions and other civic groups and communicating the need for our referendum. We also put out 100 signs from the district on, to our schools, so you'll see some of those here and in our schools. And I've been made aware that there is another group that's putting out some other signs, so they'll have those available within our community to let people know. One of the things that I will continue to reiterate and say that we need to tell people to flip the ballot, because on the front side of the ballot is a lot of the election information that people are probably aware of within our nation and our state and our region, but on the backside, we're the only ones. So we want to make sure that people flip that over and vote on the backside. So we'll continue to use social media, news media, and information. Patrick Gasper and myself are working hard on trying to just continue to put other updates out there. We have an op-ed prepared for the newspaper that'll go out towards the end of the month, and then we have a communication that will go home to every parent through our Infinite Campus Messenger at the end of this week. And we're continuing to look at ways to put the one-pagers in the hands of folks, and so we have parent-teacher conferences that is not this week, but the following week. And so we're going to have those, each school has, I think I've showed you a few examples of the one-page, or what happens at Harrison, or what happens at Marshall, or what happens at Kennedy. And so those families will have an opportunity to take that and see the one-page is that building. And we had some feedback, and we put the back page as our operational referendum. So we'll continue to communicate to those groups, answer questions, update our website. And again, if you have any feedback or thoughts about how we might or groups we might need to communicate with, continue to let us know, and we definitely are on track to do that.
Thank you. Anybody, go ahead.
Just a quick question about the cards, the postcard mailers. So are those going out to a certain demographic? Are they going out just to all registered voters or people that you know vote always in November, that kind of stuff?
Actually, they go out to everybody who has a ZIP code in the school district of Janesville.
Okay.
So it is a mass mailing.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I can share, I'll send you a draft. We're not final final, but I'll send you a draft of what it looks like in your email. How's that?
Anyone else?
Future meeting dates. The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, October 15th, at 4:30 PM here at the Educational Services Center. And our next Board of Education meeting and budget hearing will be on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center. That's all for October.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Ta-da.